I'd like to bring this meeting of the Williamsburg James City County School Board to order. Mr. Kelly is with us electronically, so if I could have a motion to allow him to participate in tonight's work session.
Madam Chair, I move that Mr. Jim Kelly be allowed to participate in tonight's work session and action items meeting via electronic communications due to work-related travel in Saratoga Springs, New York where Mr. Kelly is calling in from.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
And if I could have a motion to certify closed session.
I certify that to the best of each member's knowledge, the Williamsburg James City County School Board, while in closed session, discussed only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements. It stated in Virginia law that only such public matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Is there a second?
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Ms. Serser, can we take the roll, please?
Dr. Beers.
Here.
Ms. Cook.
Here.
Ms. Hummel.
Here.
Mr. Kelly.
Here.
Mrs. Taylor.
Here.
Mrs. Young.
Here.
Ms. Ombi.
Here.
Moving on to item 3.2, approval of the agenda. If I could have a motion, please. Madam Chair, I move that we approve the agenda as presented. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? None. Ms. Serser?
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Okay, moving on to item 4.1, announcements. Superintendent's report. Dr. Heron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My first announcements this evening will literally be music to your ears. I'm proud to tell you that the WJCC Schools was recently named a 2019 Best Community for Music Education by the National Association of Music Merchants Foundation. Honoraries were selected based on their exceptional commitment to music and the arts, using evidence such as staffing of highly qualified teachers, funding of programs, and access to music instruction. As you know, by the time they graduate, all WJCC school students have participated in some form of music education in our schools. This includes general music courses, orchestra, band, and chorus. This is extraordinary. We really value our music education. Kudos to our music and fine arts teachers and students for their outstanding work and for the honor of being named a 2019 Best Community for Music Education. Congratulations also go out tonight to the recipients of the Spring Innovative Learning Grants from the WJCC Schools Foundation. I had the opportunity to join foundation members as well as some school board members for surprise classroom visits last week. Teachers were very excited and extremely grateful to receive the grants to support enhanced classroom learning experiences for their students. The WJCC Schools Foundation awarded more than $34,000 during this most recent grant cycle. We are fortunate to have such a generous and strategic partner in education. And finally tonight, I'd like to share a story of incredible kindness by one of our James Blair Middle School students. Seventh grader Finley Hooker was recently featured on Wavy TV 10 for organizing a special event to support patients at the Children's Hospital of the King's Daughters. Let's watch.
When you look at 13-year-old Finley Hooker, she looks like the picture of health.
I do tap jazz ballet miracle basically.
Never knows she has to work much harder than the average teen to do.
My whole right side is as much as I can.
That's because days after she was born, Finley suffered a stroke. Her mother Kristen never forgets the horrifying time.
Go in the hospital in Pittsburgh and she started having.
Amy Finley was rushed to Children's Hospital of the King's Daughters in Norfolk.
Once we got here to CHKD, you just have a sense of calm and peace. You know you're in the right place for your kid.
Finley recovered but still meets with CHKD doctors and physical therapists regularly. As a way to give back, she and her family created Finley's Party with a Purpose.
I have a party with a purpose and some gifts I ask for money or donations for CHKD.
The party is big with fun themes and even a DJ.
This year I've raised 1,800 and then overall my 13th birthday, I've given $2,200.
All of that money goes to CHKD. It helps with services that are not reimbursable by insurance.
Our buddy brigade pet therapy dogs that come visit our patients, art therapy, our child life team.
Kate Ryan of CHKD says the hospital is so thankful for the donations. But it's Finley who says she is the thankful one, and she hopes other children follow her lead and give back.
No matter if it's small or you can do anything as long as you try and you want to help somebody or help anything, then you can do it.
Finley is absolutely amazing, and her act of kindness is helping so many other young people. As a reminder, WJC Schools is pleased to support the Williamsburg Kind Initiative organized by the Chamber of Commerce. Board members, parents, and community members can help share photos and stories of kindness by posting them on social media using the hashtag WMBGKind. Madam Chair, that concludes my announcement for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. I know Ms. Taylor has some comments, and I'll circle around.
Okay. That's a tough act to follow. I was tearing up a little bit. Okay. On March 27th, I had the opportunity to attend a student advisory committee meeting with Ms. Young. And at this meeting, we discussed the change in graduation requirements to align with the portrait of a graduate, as well as programs and resources to assist our students with career and college preparation. Our students had a lot of wonderful ideas about how to get the information out about these programs to help our students prepare for their next steps. And is there anything you would like to add about?
I think you did a great job. That is a fun group.
Yes.
We laugh a lot.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Other additional comments from board members? We're moving on to citizens' comments. I believe we do have one. Since Mr. Kelly is not here, Ms. Hummel will give instructions to him.
Okay. This is the time when citizens who have submitted speaker cards are invited to address the board. Speakers are asked to come to the podium when their names are called, state their name for the record, and direct their comments to the Chair of the Board. Each speaker is allocated three minutes. Time cannot be yielded to another speaker. Personnel matters are not discussed in open school board meetings, and we ask that you refrain from making reference to specific individuals. The Board is interested in hearing all comments fully and requests that citizens refrain from verbal outbursts, applause, or any other type of demonstration. Although the Board does not respond to comments at this time, please know that we are listening and we appreciate your time. Thank you for adhering to these guidelines. Madam Chair, my directions are concluded.
Thank you.
And if Andrew Archbold could please come up here. What is it? Is it?
It's Archbold.
Archbold, okay.
You'd think I teach in front of 30 kids every day. I'd be able to do this, but you people still intimidate me. Tonight, what I'm here to talk about is teacher retention, what seems to be the main theme coming from this board. I've heard time and time again from this board that in order to retain teachers, the pay must be increased. I will certainly agree that teachers are not paid enough, and given that I am in my eighth year of teaching, I have firsthand experience that hard this lifestyle is given the pay. I have also been researching for the last few years a simple question that I find very useful given this time. Why do teachers leave their jobs? This question has led me to a lot of different sources, such as professional educational journals and op-ed pieces in national newspapers. All of these sources have the same consistent theme, and pay is only part of it. In fact, pay tends to be a smaller part than people realize. So before you spend my tax dollars, let's try to fix the larger issue. Teachers become teachers because of their expectation of the experience teaching. Teachers stay teachers because of that experience. Time and time again, I have come, uh, time and time again, I came down to the experience and different sources, uh, and, oh my gosh. Time and time again, I came down to the experience and the different sources I have read, both scholarly and anecdotally supporting this. No one becomes a teacher or stays a teacher because of money. We as educators want to feel supported, listened to, respected, and that we are contributing to our community in a positive way. The feeling of support and listened to comes straight from our administrators, both building and central office. If principals are in the hallways and in the classrooms offering suggestions and listening to teachers like I have actually experienced, then how can teachers know that they will be supported in their struggles? If the expected resources are not there, like working copiers in a single classroom that can be used and not floating between multiple rooms, how do teachers know that central office will even understand their struggles or support them? No matter where I've taught, be it in Pennsylvania, Connecticut, or other school divisions here in Virginia, principals and APs have never been held accountable for the climate in their schools. A part of their job is to build a strong school climate where teachers feel supported and feel valued. But are you, as a school board, actually checking on that? Are you, you are the ones that are hiring these people and spending a great deal of my tax dollars on them, given that their salaries are not teaching salaries. Are you checking they're doing their part? Are you checking that the people in central office are doing their part to make sure their resources are there and working? Again, you are the ones hiring them and paying these people. How good is a manager if they don't actually check on the people that they're working, or people that work for them? Along those lines, how good is a manager that also overworks their employees? Teachers already have a lot to complete. There's lesson plans, division mandated training, and new professional development initiatives every year. And that's just the naming a few of the mountain of tasks to be completed. As an example of the extra work these teachers are doing, I will hand this off.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
She'll share that with the rest of the board. Thank you so much. Moving on to item 6.1, the Special Education Annual Plan and the title B, flow-through funds.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Annually, we bring to you the annual special education plan, and Dr. Burrow, Director of Special Education, is here to take, to walk us through the plan this evening and explain it to the board. Thank you, Dr. Burrow.
Thank you. Greetings, Madam Chair, Dr. Heron, and members of the school board. It's always a pleasure to come before you each year to review the proposed local special education annual plan, which, as you know, is a regulatory requirement under the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act of 2004. As you are aware, the federal funds that are provided to local education agencies under this plan may only be used for the provision of special education and related services for children with disabilities. The amount of federal funds that are allocated to school divisions is based off of a formula which is not shared with us. However, it does take into consideration historical federal funding, total school enrollment, and poverty level. As required by the guidelines, this plan has been shared with the members of the Special Education Advisory Committee on March 14th. And this evening, I will walk you through the substantive provisions in the application for the 2019-2020 award year. Each of you should have a packet that looks like this, and I kindly ask that if you have your packets with you to reference page eight.
We don't.
You don't have the packet. Okay. So.
I'm looking at it on.
You have it there. Okay.
I've got it here.
Okay. Does everyone have access to it? Okay. Got it. Got it. So you saved a couple of trees, so that, that's always kind. But if I can call your attention to page eight in the application, you'll see what's listed as the Report on Implementation of the 2017-2018 Annual Plan. And I'll give you a few moments to get there. Page numbers are at the very bottom.
It goes from seven to one. You mean the eighth? Are you looking at the revised edition?
I'm looking at the annual plan. Do we need to look at the revised?
Open the revised.
Okay. Got it.
Thanks, Hall.
Okay.
Everyone see, okay. Okay. Great. Thank you. As you see on page eight, I've noted here under the Report on Implementation of the 2017-18 Annual Plan that all federal monies allotted in the 17-18 Annual Plan were used solely for salaries and benefits of special education personnel. Historically, our division has used these funds for special education personnel, and as you're here later, that the, that's the case for the proposed plan for 1920. The next noteworthy provision is Maintenance of Effort, and that can be found on page nine. And Maintenance of Effort is a federal regulation that requires a school division to budget at least the same amount that it actually spent on the education of students with disabilities in the most recent or preceding fiscal year. So the expenditures that are listed on page 10 are an estimated or projected amount that's based on the division's 2019-2020 preliminary budget. And these numbers have been provided and verified by our finance department. So just to take you through that, you'll see that the projections for fiscal year 20, we are expected or projected to spend 16.4 million local dollars. For fiscal year 2019, we spent 14.2 million. So we will exceed that threshold for the upcoming year. Local plus state dollars, we're projected to spend 21.2 million. For fiscal, the current year, we've spent 18.5 million. So once again, we will exceed that threshold. In terms of per capita local funds, the previous year, 8,000, we're slated to spend 8.5 thousand dollars. And then local plus state per capita, previous spending has been 10,700 dollars. We're slated to spend 11,000 dollars. So there are four ways that you can meet the compliance requirement for Maintenance of Effort. And as you see, we are projected to spend more in all of these categories. The regulations only require that you meet it in one area, and again, we're projected to meet it in all four. I can call your attention to page 10. You'll see the proportionate set aside requirement. And the federal child fund regulations require local school divisions to identify, locate, evaluate, and subsequently serve students with disabilities who reside in our locality who need special education and related services. That obligation also extends to children who attend private schools in our locality or are homeschooled within the geographic boundaries of our locality. There are 48 students who fit this definition, and the average allocation per eligible child is 1,195.71, making our total proportionate set aside amount 57,393.88. Currently, speech and language services are the only direct special education service that we provide to students who are private school or parentally placed. And again, that is not a decision that is made in isolation. On an annual basis, we hold a meeting called Meaningful and Timely Consultation Meeting, where we invite in stakeholders, representatives from private schools, parents of children with disabilities who are homeschooling their children, to hear their input on what special education services do you find most necessary. And time and time again, speech and language services has been the service that they would like to the school division to provide. So these funds are set aside, as noted here on page 10, to cover a portion of the salaries and benefits of the speech-language pathologists who provide these services to these students. Moving on to page 12. This page speaks to Section 611 of the sub-grant. And that pot of money covers students grade K through 12. On page 12, you will see that it identifies the special education personnel whose salary and benefits will be paid with these specific funds. There are 21 special education teachers. Interestingly, there, in the division, we have 115 special education teachers, so the remaining 94 are paid out of local funds. Five and a half speech-language pathologists are paid out of Section 611 funds. There are 22 in the division, and the remaining 16.5 are paid from local funds. Six special education paraprofessionals or teacher assistants are paid through Section 611 funds. There are 114 in the division, and the remaining 108 are paid from local funds. And this section, subsection, also covers one part-time parent resource center coordinator. And it also covers .2 of the salary of a full-time K-8 literacy coordinator.
I'm just curious, how do you arrive at, uh, how did you, how did it become .2?
So.
Because of the, uh, what, you took.
So it is a full-time position, and I, and I'm not privy to the other pieces of funding for that particular position, but, um, and I, someone who may have some more corporate history can speak to that, but I know out of this particular grant, we paid that amount of that FTE. So I'm sorry, I don't have the corporate history on that, but.
I believe the literacy coordinator spends time with special education teachers so that we're, we're serving this imliteracy model to all students, is my understanding.
And she also serves as a dyslexia specialist for the division, so she does provide.
Whatever services that person provides, it's the equivalent of, of two-tenths of a position. Right, that's what I thought.
Section 611, the sub-grant amount is listed on page 13. And again, it is based off of the award amount from last year, which was 2,83,667. The preliminary funding allocations from the U.S. Department of Special Education, Office of Special Ed Programs, they, those numbers have not been released yet. So the Virginia Department of Education directs us to build our plan off of the award amounts from the previous year. The remaining three pages, pages 14 through 16, speak to Section 619, which is the Early Childhood Special Education Grant. And this part, these pages just really indicate that the allocation from last year, which was 26,754, will be used to support a portion of the salary for a school nurse in the Bright Beginnings program. So that number has kind of waxed and waned, but it has not exceeded 30,000 in the past several years. But following your approval, this application will be submitted to the Virginia Department of Education, and following their approval, the plan will take effect July 1st, 2019. The grant runs for 27 consecutive months, and it has to be expended by September 30th of 2021.
All right, yeah. Um, or, I, I note that we're seeing an increase in our preschool special ed kids. 26,000 doesn't seem like a lot of money. It's, it's part of that because we can use Title I. With like, you know, part of that goes for Bright Beginnings. I, it just seems, um, that, I don't know why, I think that number should be larger than that is. Maybe, maybe it should, and maybe, you know.
I think this is a very small portion of the funding, just like the, the total grant is just over 2 billion, and yet we spend 16 or like 20, 21 million on special education. So most of it's either, there's a lot of.
How much, how much do we, how much are we spending on the total amount for early childhood education for?
Don't have that, but we can certainly, we can get that information for you.
I'm just trying to see how that, um, how that fits in.
Yeah.
Because we, because, you know, I think nationally, everybody's seeing that. You're seeing an increase in the under-six-year-olds coming to school who are qualifying for special ed services. That's why I was just curious.
And just to piggyback on your question about that amount, that is actually the highest it's been since 2012, 2013. It's waxed and waned from 25,480. The lowest it's been has been 21,824. So that's actually the highest that it's been.
My assumption is all, all those other little piles have also been going up as well.
Absolutely.
Because I mean, I've looked at some of the numbers, and, you know, and I know that, you know, there was something in, uh, earlier in one of those pages, and the answer was no. And that was, are you being required to set aside up to 15%? Well, we are setting, we, we're up to about 14 and a half percent anyway, even if we're not required, so.
I think you're talking about the coordinated early intervention, early intervening services, yeah.
Mrs. Young.
Yes, I just had a question. We, if I have my figure right, you can correct me. We spend approximately a little, somewhere around 11,000 per student. Is this money in addition to that per student?
Yes. Are you looking at the Maintenance of Effort numbers that I spoke to?
Well, I, I was looking at, it's going from 8.5 thousand dollars to 11,000, but I'm talking about, it costs more to educate our special ed kids. That's, that's basically what I'm trying to establish.
The cost above and beyond that they're required. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Kelly, do you have questions or?
Yeah, we'll see how this works. Dr. Burrow, I always appreciate your coming forward and explaining all this to us, and, you know, any penny we get is obviously a good one. But one question I do have, and this is more of an education for me, so we had to talk about, you know, your Maintenance of Effort, where we have to show that we have increased our spending. If we were in a situation where we had, like, like a lot of school systems, where we had a reducing student population, how does, how does that, how would that allow those school systems to still qualify for that money?
That is an excellent question, and because I don't calculate the Maintenance of Effort, I may have to defer to finance to weigh in on that. But again, you can meet it one of four ways, and the state does make some provisions if, in fact, a school division finds themselves in that, that position. I think on the page that, page nine, it talks about an alternative route to meeting that calculation. There, there, the LEA is allowed to consider certain exceptions to make adjustments to the Maintenance of Effort, to make sure that we're in compliance with that. But I don't, I don't know the specifics to be able to answer other than that general response I gave you, but I can certainly look into that.
Okay. I, I appreciate that. I'm just, just for my education, you know, it's, it's kind of, I don't know, a good comment. I don't know if it's a good comment, but it's a comment on what the federal government makes us go through for the amount of money that they give us to fill out these forms just for, you know, what is relatively a paltry sum of money. But I do appreciate your, your, your presentation and explanation. It's always helpful to me.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Thank you. Additional questions, comments? Thank you, Dr. Burrow. Okay, moving on to item 6.2, the Carl D. Perkins Local Plan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Annually, we bring you the plan for the Carl D. Perkins Career and Technical Education Act. The Perkins Five, I believe it's called at this point. And Mr. Paula and Ms. Park are going to present the plan to the board this evening and take us through it. I believe you have a, a PowerPoint in front of you as well. Mr. Paula.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Heron, and members of the board, and Mr. Kelly. The Carl D. Perkins Career and Technical Education Act focuses on improving the academic and technical achievement of CTE students and strengthening the connection between secondary and post-secondary education. Perkins affords states and local committees, communities, pardon, the opportunity to implement a vision for CTE that uniquely supports the range of educational needs of students and balances those student needs with the current and emerging needs of the economy. On July 1st, 2018, the President signed the Strengthening Career and Technical Education for the 21st Century Act, also known as Perkins. for the 21st Century Act, also known as Perkins 5. While full implementation will begin on July 1st, 2019, and will be implemented beginning 2020, 21, some provisions will go into effect for the 2019-2020 school year, which will serve as a transition for the new law. As a result, you will notice some new language and terms as we walk through tonight's presentation of the local plan. Each year, we're required to develop and implement a local plan for CTE in order to be eligible for funding. This plan has been reviewed and approved by members of our 21st Century and Career Ready Advisory Committee, and I, along with Mrs. Parker, Coordinator of School Counseling, will present this local plan to you this evening. This plan is broken up into different sections referred to as schedules, and there are a total of 18 schedules in addition to the annual performance assessment in the local Perkins Plan. In alignment with our strategic plan, Elevate Beyond Excellence, the Perkins 5 Plan supports academic achievement and college and career readiness, educational equity and access for all students, and communication and engagement of a variety of stakeholders. The 21st Century and Career Ready Advisory Committee is made up of representatives from each of the stakeholders that you can see here. The advisory committee, which meets throughout the year, has been involved in the development, implementation, and evaluation of WJCC's CTE programs and local needs assessments. We would like to thank all members of this committee for their dedication to CTE, and for reviewing, providing input, and approving this year's local plan at the March 13th, 2019 meeting, and a special thank you to Mrs. Young for her support on this committee. The participation of this committee provides invaluable insight and a wealth of knowledge and resources for which we are truly grateful. A list of specific members of the 21st Century and Career Ready Advisory Committee is listed on Schedules 1 and 2 of our local plan. Mrs. Parker will now walk you through Schedules 3 through 15.
Good evening. Part of the Perkins 5 Plan includes an examination of WJCC performance on identified standards in comparison with Virginia agreed-upon performance levels. This information will be broken down over two slides. In this slide, you can see that WJCC met and exceeded Virginia agreed-upon performance levels in all categories identified here. Additionally, WJCC experienced significant growth in a number of performance areas from the previous years, and these are identified in green. Here you can see that WJCC met and exceeded Virginia agreed-upon performance levels in all but one category. While we experienced significant growth in a number of performance areas from the previous year, which are indicated in green, in the final category of non-traditional career preparation, WJCC's rate was 20.69%, which did fall below the performance standard of 28% and is indicated in red. This category refers to the completion rate of students in state-identified courses for non-traditional career preparation, or preparation for an occupation where individuals from one gender comprise less than 25% of total individuals employed in that occupation. And again, those are state-identified courses. So for example, females taking computer information systems, or digital electronics, or males taking Introduction to Virginia Teachers for Tomorrow, or Opportunities in Hospitality and Tourism. So those are some of the state-identified non-traditional courses. The difference between WJCC meeting this performance standard and not meeting the standard was five CTE non-traditional completers. A 2017-2018 change in the designated state-identified courses for non-traditional gender, specifically the removal of information technology fundamentals and design multimedia and web technologies, from the list, precluded the marking of 24 additional WJCC students who would have qualified as CTE non-traditional completers. State identification of courses for non-traditional career preparation were published after the 2017-2018 course request process had ended. So this shift has now been factored into our methods to include and recruit non-traditional students for state-identified CTE courses for 2019, 2020, and beyond. Absolutely.
Said two things, non-traditional students, and that this is non-traditional career preparation. Which are we talking about? Are we talking about careers that are non-traditional, or are we talking about non-traditional?
We're talking about gender. So specifically, there are state-identified courses that certain genders have been, have been labeled non-traditional for that specific program, for that specific course.
A guy signs up for a cosmetology course.
Then that would count, yep. Depending, for the VDOE, then that would be a non-traditional completer.
And the state has identified those?
The state has identified courses, yes, and then also identified the gender, in which would be non-traditional. And they change. So we are keeping up with those changes, and then working through our course request process to continue recruiting.
I'm not sure the state is, but that's okay.
Ms. Cook?
Yeah, because, you know, at some point, those are going to become, you know, they do become traditional.
Correct.
There are actually a lot of men in cosmetology.
Correct. Which we saw with the change from information technology fundamentals, in which females used to be that non-traditional indicator, and no longer are. So, so we do see changes as they occur.
Ms. Cook?
Could you help us understand better? You talked about how it'll impact the course. Can you help me understand, will that change how you, what you assign students to, which, yeah, if you can help me understand what you'll do?
Yes, absolutely. No, so we don't, so students select courses that they're interested in, of course. But a lot of times, this information, students find it really interesting, so we like to provide them this information, we like to help them understand which non-traditional career fields are. And so the information they're provided in 2017-2018 course request changed after our course request process for the next year, if that makes sense. So we just provide updated information about what is a non-traditional course, per the state, and what is it.
So it would seem like we really don't have a lot of control over that number.
Right, right.
We really don't, yes. We really don't, but in providing the information to students, then the hope is that, you know, they can make informed decisions just based on what we have.
And students may have signed up for that course thinking it was non-traditional, and after they did so, it became a traditional course.
And where do they find out that it's non-traditional? That's, that's not noted in the Program of Studies?
Oh, it's absolutely not, no. So a lot of times when our students are meeting with school counselors, and they're having those conversations, and talking about CTE completer pathways and CTE completers, that comes up. It's not something that we actively promote, but again, it's just additional information to help with decision-making.
I can't help, but this is really, it's bizarre, because, you know, 30 years ago, the primary coders were all, they were all women, they were primarily women. And then over time, males emerged, got hired. So I'm, I'm just, yeah, it's like males actually got into that non-traditional career because it was, it was women that were doing the coding and using them on computers, data processing, all that stuff. So I'm just, I'm, I know, I'm just sort of thinking out loud, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
It's like the more things change, the.
So again, those courses are state-identified courses for non-traditional. Of course, our.
And that's not always.
Lisa?
Yes, Mr. Kelly?
Does the, does the student care if it's non-traditional or not? Or is it, is the student just interested in that?
We, we don't tend to field a lot of questions about whether a course is non-traditional or not.
Do you call, when a student signs up, is, you're signing up for a non-traditional course?
No.
Good, so you, that's what you want to take?
No, we certainly don't want to do anything to deter our students from, yeah, no, not at all.
Okay.
Is there, is there any weight, like, if we had zero male students signing up for some of the non-traditional male versus 100% of the female, I mean, does it make any difference whatsoever? So.
Not at all. And again, keep in mind, these numbers, when we're talking about these numbers, they're not talking about all CTE students, they're talking about completers. So when we look at our annual performance review, they're specific to completers when we're reporting to the state. So a completer's a student who's completed at least two courses in a single CTE sequence of courses. So it tends to be a student who has a field of interest in which they're completing more than one CTE course. So all of these numbers reflect completer, CTE completers.
So bottom line for, I think, probably most of us, we really don't care that this is red.
Yes. Just an area to note.
It's a state, it's a.
Okay, so we talked a lot in the performance assessment about credentialing tests and pass rates. So here, we take a deeper look at those credentials. In 2017-2018, 1,231 total credentials were earned by WJCC students. So this is a comprehensive list of the 37 different types of credentials earned, provided by 13 different credentialing agencies. Yes, ma'am?
I've asked this, I ask this every year.
Sure.
Of the 1,231 of those credentials, how many were the financial literacy?
So the wise financial literacy were 397, and that's our second highest in terms of students completing industry certification.
And what, what's the highest?
It tends to be the Workplace Readiness Skills for the Commonwealth, which was 494. And then the third highest, which I always think is interesting, was Customer Service and Sales, which was 106.
Ms. Cook?
The highest, has that, was that number, has that gone up recently in light of the project pathways and Link 5 and Concourse? And has that number increased because of that work that we've been doing? In other words, did it not used to be number one, and now it is because of that?
So I know for the past couple of years, that number has been relatively high. And some of that, I would say, would be due to the requirement for a standard diploma that students do receive an industry credential. And that is a, Workplace Readiness Skills for the Commonwealth is an industry credential in which a student who takes any CTE course has the opportunity to take. So it's not as specified in terms of industry credentialing exams as some of the other ones. So it's a great exam that any student can take if they have already completed a CTE course.
So the financial literacy does not count as an industry credential?
It does, it's the wise financial literacy down here.
So if you get that, that counts towards your graduation?
Yes, yep.
Just a quick question. How many of those credits are obtained by being in our three high schools, as opposed to going down to New Horizons?
Yep, absolutely. And you know, let me see if I have that broken down. So I can, I can easily get that break down to you.
Yeah, because I, I know, you know, I think in the past, that's one of the primary reasons some school divisions have used New Horizons. Because we offer so many more of these courses in our high schools that they choose, though it isn't, sometimes I think there's a misperception that if we don't send tons of kids down to New Horizons, there must be something wrong with the schedule, or. And in fact, the vast majority of those credits are obtained right here.
Correct.
In our three high schools, which is, which is, I think is a real plus.
Yes, I can confirm that the majority of the industry credentials earned were earned through WJCC coursework. But I'm happy to get you those exact, the breakdown of those numbers.
Yes.
And are most of those online? I'm assuming they're all online. Are they all online?
The industry credentialing exams, the majority of them are.
Ms. Parker, do we track students who attempt to obtain the industry credential but don't?
Yes, in a number of different ways, we do. So students who earn the industry credential, that of course goes on their transcripts under achievement, so we see that, and that's reported out on all student transcripts. And then through our SharePoint system, we actually have a separate kind of tracking that goes on per course. So when students take certain courses, we can compile that data to see if the same student is taking multiple industry credentialing exams and not passing.
Is there an opportunity to retake it? Is it, is it just take it once?
Depending, each exam is different. So these exams come from 13 different industry testing agencies, and they all have their own rules in terms of pre-tests or retakes. For example, the Workplace Readiness Skills for the Commonwealth, you can take up to three times with a certain amount of time in between each assessment.
I know this is really difficult, because I know the college has trouble doing this as well. Are we able, do we have any kind of mechanism to follow up on these graduates who've gotten this certification or licensure? Did they end up getting a job? If it's into this either after one year, six? We do, I probably, I know it's hard to do.
So we actually do do, and part of the Perkins, we actually do do a CTE completer survey. And so we do follow up with all of our CTE completers the year after they're graduated, and then that information is actually compiled into another report.
Oh, wow.
Yep.
Could I, could we see that as well?
Sure. Absolutely, yeah. And we're getting ready to start the cycle for our 2018 graduates right now. Yeah.
One additional question, are there fees associated with all, with the credential and exams?
So WJCC pays for all student industry credentialing exams. And students are not assessed a fee for taking any of these.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Young, do you have a question?
I was just reflecting back to NSBA, because one of the things they were, they talked about, which I had mentioned to you, is, is that, that in many cases, that these credentials are becoming more important than a college degree. And, and a lot of businesses are hiring students that have credentials and are not nearly as concerned about that, that diploma, which I think is, I think that's a way that we're really heading. So I think it's wonderful that, that WJCC is on board with that, but thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am. And I think it is important to note that over two years, we've gone from 595 industry credentials earned to 1,231. So you can kind of see our trajectory as more and more students are earning one or more industry credentials.
Ms. Parker, I know you have more to cover. Mr. Kelly, do you have any additional questions before Ms. Parker continues?
I do not, thank you.
Additionally, each year, we're required to submit a career pathway plan of study, aligning specific academic and technical coursework at the secondary and post-secondary level with an identified career cluster and career pathway that meets the need of industries in state, region, or the local area. So this information is reflected in Schedule 3 of the local Perkins Plan. For 2019-2020, WJCC submitted a plan of study representing the education and training career cluster and the teaching and training career pathway. This plan of study offers a pathway that highlights WJCC's expansion of CTE coursework in the Career Connection strand for 2019-2020. Specifically, this expansion includes our introduction of Virginia Teachers for Tomorrow, Virginia Teachers Tomorrow 1 and 2, which will be available, or which is offered at all three high schools. This plan of study also includes a clear pathway with multiple entry and exit points for students to complete a CTE concentration, and eventually go on to become a completer, and go on to pursue post-secondary education and employment that will allow them to fill any of the critical teaching shortage areas identified by the Virginia Department of Education. Perkins 5 also requires divisions to report current numbers of students from special populations, which is reflected in Schedule 4. This information is provided by recent student record data collection. Perkins 5 expanded the definition of special populations, so you will see two new categories here. You'll see homeless individuals, which is a new category, as well as youth with a parent on active duty in the armed forces. Additionally, youth who are in the foster care system is now a separate category. It used to fall under economically disadvantaged. Here you'll also see a list of activities and other resources and services that WJCC provides to these special populations that leads to self-sufficiency. Schedules 5 through 10 refer to our Perkins-supported program areas listed here, and allow us to identify different activities that we use to improve academic and technical skills of students, provide students with work-based learning opportunities, develop, improve, or expand the use of technology, provide professional development to teachers, counselors, or administrators associated with CTE programs, use performance standards to continue to improve the performance of the CTE programs, or improve, expand, or modernize each particular program area. The first six bullets represent WJCC or WJCC and New Horizons Perkins-supported program areas, and the final two bullets represent New Horizons Perkins-supported program areas in which our students participate. Schedules 11 through 14 include narratives providing further explanation and details about our CTE program and information that we have already reviewed this evening. And this breakdown is reflected in Schedule 15, and determines the amount of Perkins funding that will be allotted to New Horizons from WJCC for the 2019-2020 school year.
Can I ask a? What are those numbers compared to last year's numbers?
Yep, so our numbers have increased. So last year, the amount allotted was $3,519, and you can see the number this year.
As far as the students served?
So our student served has actually gone down. Last year, we were at 2506, and this year, we're at 2468. But the number of CTE students participating in the Regional Technical Center has gone up from 66 to 91. So it looks at the total students, both at WJCC and at New Horizons as part of the formula, and then it looks at just the students attending New Horizons to help. formula, and then it looks at just the students attending New Horizons to help calculate the formula. So, this year, three point sixty-nine percent of our students are attending the Regional Technical Center. Last year, two point sixty-three percent of students. So, that kind of shows where that increase came from.
Now, is that because we moved the location of those courses closer to Williamsburg? Does that, did that make, that make any impact at all?
It would be interesting to look to see if there's growth in specific courses that moved, that, that would absolutely be an interesting point to look at.
Because I know they totally, you know, restructured that building down there, and it is closer, it's much closer than the...
And the other one, yep.
Yeah, if that would be any kind of like context of, of why the changes and reasons and...
Absolutely. So, we're looking at why we have more students participating in New Horizons than we did maybe the previous year, and then what courses have grown.
I just think...
Yeah, that's great. We will get that to you.
Schedules sixteen through eighteen are the areas in which we develop the budget for WJCC's Perkins allocation. Perkins funds are used to initiate, improve, expand, and modern, modernize quality CTE programs. They're used to develop, improve, or expand the use of technology in CTE, provide professional development for teachers, and provide experiences to prepare special populations involved in CTE student organizations, and allow them to participate in regional, state, national leadership development activities. As you can see, we have budgeted forty-three point six percent to go to capital outlay and equipment. These funds are used to refresh labs, provide hardware, software, such as three-D printers, Sphero robots, and Vex robotic kits. And if you've ever seen the spheres, the little round things that the kids will program. Thirty-three point seven percent is budgeted to purchase services or services acquired from an outside source. These include professional development, student activities for our special population students, and New Horizons Regional Technical Center. Nineteen point three percent has been budgeted for indirect costs and other charges such as conference registrations, fees, travel and lodging, and professional organization memberships. And finally, three point four percent is budgeted for personal services, which is used for administrative support for CTE credentialing. Ms. Parker mentioned that we're going to be sending out those follow-up surveys. Part of the money in personal services is used to hire somebody to help us track those, send those out. This is a review of the entitlement of funds over the past several years. You can see that this year's Perkins application is based on the amount of funding we received last year. Once the state determines WJCC's actual allocation, we will submit a grant amendment that aligns with the new funding amount. The state receives their allocation of federal funds and then applies a funding formula that determines what each locality will receive. The formula is based on the number of students who reside in the school division and also takes into account the number of students aged five through seventeen or from families below the poverty level for the preceding school year. This year, all school divisions were required to perform a comprehensive local needs assessment, which looked at each of these areas. This new process reflects best practices already occurring in CTE programs throughout the Commonwealth, but will help ensure a more formal feedback loop between data, planning, and funding decisions under Perkins Five. You have a copy of the needs assessment at your seats. Ms. Parker has already presented information on federal accountability indicators in addition to our plan of study. The needs assessment also asks divisions to reflect on how their programs align to local labor market needs. We continue to work with local businesses, representatives of workforce development, and local colleges and universities to identify local labor and market needs.
I'm sorry, we're trying to find it.
It's on, it's online.
It's online.
Okay. It's not here. Okay. It's here.
It's online?
Got it.
Has everybody found it?
Yep.
Okay, great. As, as recruitment, retention, and training of faculty and staff is a strategic plan goal, WJCC has continued to expand its recruiting efforts with university partnerships and broadening outreach to historically black colleges and universities. This new comprehensive needs assessment will, moving forward, be required every two years. We look forward to using this document to guide future decisions regarding programs, professional development, and allocation of funds. And that concludes our formal presentation. Happy to answer any additional questions you may have.
Thank you. I have one, just one maybe for the listening public. Mr. Pollak, could you share with us what we learned about our partnership with Thomas Nelson and health sciences, and how that's changing coursework, students in the future?
So, we are continuing to have talks with Thomas Nelson, and we're looking into, I think we had a talk about two weeks ago, we're looking into expanding several different programs. I think it's the EMT program is one of them, possibly in the future firefighters. So, there's a continuing relationship that we're going to have with them, and they reached out to us asking which programs we'd be interested in pursuing. And so, collaboratively, we're going to see what's the best fit and how we can make it accessible to all three schools.
And like, what's the timeline for something like that to actually, for students to be able to participate in?
I think next year, nineteen twenty, is going to be a planning year, and twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one is the year they'll actually be able to sign up for courses.
I need...
Yep.
Additional comments or feedback? Thank you so much. Okay, moving on to item six point three, purchase requests for centralized storage infrastructure. Dr. Heron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Lowders is going to bring some information on a purchase and from the Department of Technology to do with our infrastructure this evening. I won't attempt to introduce it, I'll hand it straight to Mr. Lowders.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Heron. With this item, we are asking for your consideration for purchasing infrastructure, hardware, and services for our centralized storage capabilities. Our centralized storage allows staff and students to have a network location for storage of electronic files and resources that is accessible to them throughout the division. It's regularly backed up as part of our disaster recovery processes. Our existing infrastructure is approaching end of life and is limited in its expansion capabilities. This purchase will allow us to expand our storage capabilities, consolidate our file storage resources, as well as increase our disaster recovery capabilities. The requested purchase includes Cisco HyperFlex hardware and software, as well as implementation and training services for a total cost of one hundred forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars and four cents. Thank you, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Actually, do you have a question on page, you know, there, page four of thirteen? I'm just, I'm just reading through here, wondering what JBAFS is?
That is one of our file servers. It's an acronym that we use as a naming convention so that we can identify each of our file servers.
Yeah, I can kind of figure out what everything else is.
Yeah, it's James Blair Administration File Server.
So, here, okay, okay. And then the other one is the WJCFSO2?
WJCFSO2.
I'm just looking at the big data hogs.
I think that one, WJ, that's our W drive, that, that one is shared actually throughout the division to every location.
Mr. Kelly, do you have questions?
I do not.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lowders.
Thank you.
Item six point four, school bus purchase. Dr. Heron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you're aware, we are constantly working on our school bus replacement plan, and Mr. Snipes is going to bring some information on the purchase of buses for, for this year.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board members, Dr. Heron. Tonight's proposed agenda item is for six, the purchase of six school bus, the purchase of six school buses. This is an information item, and Ms. Ewing and I are here tonight to answer any questions that you may have. The six school buses will replace, will be replacement buses, and they will be full-size buses. And the cost of those total will be six hundred fifty-eight thousand, five hundred and forty-eight dollars, or a hundred and nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars each. As you're aware, the school division has developed a school bus replacement plan that suggests replacing ten buses annually. Buses that are older than the state recommended fifteen years in age will be replaced. The vendor, Sunday Merriman, is an approved vendor under annual contract, and the superintendent and staff recommended the board review this information tonight and be prepared to vote at your next meeting.
Any questions for Mr. Snipes? Yes, Mr. Kelly?
So, so these are replacement buses, so they're, these are operational, the operational budget, not the capital budget, right?
That's correct.
Okay. I'm good, thank you.
Additional questions?
I just appreciate the administration staying on top of this. It's a really important issue that's easy to cast aside, so thank you for making it happen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Snipes. Item six point five, mathematics textbooks adoption, Algebra One.
Madam Chair, Dr. Miani is here to present the, the process for the mathematics textbook adoption. And the process that'll be outlined this evening is the process that many of our textbook review committees are going through right now, but it gives us a precursor to more information coming later on. Dr. Miani, welcome.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Heron, members of the board. Tonight, I will provide you with an overview of the Algebra One textbook adoption process and a recommendation for acquisition of textbooks based on the outcome of that process. It is important to note that the textbooks evaluated by the committee are all on the VDOE's approved textbook list. I provide you all with a copy of the presentation, as well as a rubric we'll go over.
I don't have... Wait, I'll have Mr. Kelly's. I'll have Mr. Kelly's.
Is there, I have extras that everybody needs? Okay, thank you. The adoption of the Algebra One textbook aligns with Goal One of the strategic plan, academic achievement, college and career readiness. The Algebra One Virginia Standards of Learning have been recently revised, and the new standards will be assessed this upcoming June. Having textbooks and resource materials that align with the current standards ensures that students and teachers have instructional resources that align with the VDOE standards and the WJCC curriculum. Committee members are selected per School Board policy IIIAA-R. I'm appreciative of all the work of the committee members and their colleagues. In addition, I'd like to thank Dr. Beers for serving on the committee as a school board representative.
Even though it was really hard to fully understand the material in the textbook, but I, I got it.
Dr. Beers, could you please explain discrete math?
I'm still working with minus, with negative numbers.
We focus on Algebra One for the textbook acquisition.
Dr. Miani out.
First step of the process included the books and resources, resource materials being delivered by each vendor to the teachers on the committee. At that time, committee members were asked to review the materials along with their colleagues. The second step of the process included convening the textbook adoption committee, establishing the timeline, and allowing time for ongoing review of the materials at the building level. The third step included a textbook adoption fair that was held for the committee and community members. And the final step of the process included a committee meeting at the end of March to review feedback and finalize selections.
Dr. Miani, was the textbook adoption fair attended by many community members?
I have a slide for that.
Oh, sorry.
If you'd like to wait, or I can get, I can answer it now. We had seven committee members attend of the fifteen, and two community members, only one of which left feedback from the, the opportunity to be there. No. At the initial textbook adoption meeting, the committee reviewed the timeline for the textbook adoption, reviewed the two different rubrics used to collect data, which will be discussed further in an upcoming slide, and was provided with textbook adoption fair information, as well as follow-up meeting times, dates, and locations. All of the documents were provided to the committee digitally in a OneNote folder for ease of access. During the initial meeting, various committee members posed questions of interest to their areas of expertise for the secondary mathematics coordinator to take back to the vendors. At each of your tables, I provided you with a sheet of paper, has each rubric on it, the one on the front and one on the back. It's black and white.
Show me.
In front of you are the two rubrics used by the textbook adoption committee members. The first rubric was used by the teachers when evaluating the efficacy of the textbooks and resource materials in the classroom setting. The second rubric was used during the textbook adoption fair to evaluate textbook and resource materials as presented by the vendors. The committee generated a third rubric to collect student feedback. However, it was not formally used in the classroom. The textbook adoption fair was held on March twenty-first at James Blair Middle School. The event was published on the school division's website, Facebook page, and Twitter account. In addition, all secondary mathematic curriculum leads distributed the information to their team members and students. That evening, each vendor delivered a presentation explaining the benefits of the textbook, its alignment with the Virginia Standards of Learning, and additional resources that would support the instructional process in the classroom. Teachers had a deadline to submit their rubrics by the twenty-second of March in preparation for the second textbook adoption committee meeting. At that meeting, the committee members in attendance reviewed all classroom feedback and had the opportunity to add additional feedback regarding the instructional impact of the textbooks and resource materials. During this review, the team determined that one of the vendors did not meet the criteria to move forward with their textbook. Thus, the committee was left with two options. At the conclusion of the meeting, the James City County Purchasing Department was contacted to acquire two competitive bids to compare pricing for the two remaining vendors. A follow-up email was sent to all committee members informing them of the meeting outcome and requesting any additional feedback. WJCC Department of Curriculum Instruction worked with the James City County Purchasing Department to secure two competitive pricing proposals from the remaining vendors as identified by the committee. Based on the significant difference in pricing, the decision was made to go with HMH. Thank you for your time this evening. Do you have any questions?
Ms. Cook? Dr. Miani, in the board, on board docs, it talks about the Algebra One textbooks being last updated in two thousand nine with the implementation of the new, the two thousand nine mathematics standards of learning. Does that mean that's the last time we had tech, text, new textbooks here? I'm not sure, yeah.
Yeah, well, so the last time we physically purchased new textbooks was two thousand five. They did go through an adoption process at the, updating of the standards, but to my knowledge, there, at the time, there wasn't the funds to purchase the new textbooks, so it has been a substantial amount of time since we've had new resources.
So, I'm delighted we're able to do this now, and it's my sincere hope that we don't wait ten years before we do this again.
Thank you.
Additional feedback? Ms. Hummel? Oh, Mr. Kelly? Mr. Kelly, yes?
Does this, I'm sorry, am I good?
Yes, sir.
Does this purchase come with any online resources or electronic textbooks that we could use?
Yes, sir, we have a nice balance to make sure that we meet the needs of all of our students. The students will get their own edition of a physical textbook. They have the availability to download a PDF of the textbook. They also get a workbook, a workbook that they can use, and there's also an online personal math trainer with videos for students to be able to access. So, therefore, we, we wanted to make sure when we picked as a committee a resource that had a lot of resources for our students. On the teacher's side of the house, they get an addition as well. They have a management center where they have a plethora of resources from assessment materials to videos, et cetera. They can also download the resources, most of them as PDF tools. There is an end-of-course assessment readiness packet they get, additional planning guide resources, even sample lesson plans, and a response to intervention for the struggling students for them as well, a little manual that's put together. All of this aligns with our SOL standards.
Perfect. So, is that, is that for one year, or is that for the life that we have the textbooks? Or how many years out is...
The contract is for seven years for the digital resources. Right, but the downloadable PDFs and the physical textbooks and the physical workbooks we have for, until they become, I guess, unusable.
Dr. Miani, just to...
I'm sorry.
Yeah, to repeat that, so that...
You broke up there a little bit. So, how many, how many, how many, you broke up there a little bit. How many, how many years does it go for?
The contract is for seven years for the digital resources, and then the physical resources we will have until they're unusable.
Right, right. Okay, thank you very much.
Just to add on to that, Dr. Miani, so for the seven years that we have the, the downloadable options, do we also have access to that math, the online math tutor portion for...
the online math tutor portion for seven years as well?
Yes, ma'am, for all seven years.
What does HMH stand for?
That is, and I apologize for mispronouncing, I know Dr. Beers does it better than I do. HMH is, the T is silent, Hoften Mifflin Harcourt.
That's what I thought, okay.
They believe, they pronounce it Hoften, but I struggle with that.
And then just, is there any, this is just kind of my curiosity because I, I work with a lot of, at the college level, work with sometimes cheating, and so I'm just wondering if there's any protection for all of the tests, the online tests and the work, any kind of security for?
As a part of our strategic plan, a Goal One, we're working towards having division common assessments to, to take on that role of making sure that we have testing integrity. So those assessments that teachers have, if they were availability for students outside, because the internet is easy to get to everything, those are for your more formative assessments, your exit tests, your quizzes, quick check-ins with the students. So when it comes to integrity in that regard, I'm not, I, being the committee, is not necessarily as concerned with any type of massive issues in that regard.
Additional comments, questions, feedback for Dr. Miani?
Thank you very much, everyone, appreciate it.
Okay, moving on to item 7.1 Personnel Actions. Can I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the personnel actions as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Very none, Ms. Sersa?
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Okay, item 8.1, Board Member Comments. I'll start with Ms. Taylor.
Sure. I know many of my colleagues will also speak about this, but we recently had the opportunity to attend the NSBA Conference in Philadelphia, and there were many wonderful education and training opportunities for us there. And I just wanted to quickly share with you the sessions that I attended while there, and I'm going to give you the titles of those. So I attended School Climate, Social Emotional Learning, and Bully Prevention Policy and Practice Trends, A Lesson in Restraint: Keeping Teachers and Students Safer in the Classroom, From Distress to Success, Natural Helpers: Students Keeping Peers Safe, Schools in Crisis: Dealing with Dangerous and Aggressive Students, Overcoming Barriers, and a Trauma-Informed Perspective. My notes just closed on me. Let me get that back. Trauma-Informed Perspective of Educational Environments. So I think that we all learned a lot, and it's going to help us as board members and as a division moving forward. And that concludes my, my comments for today.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Mrs. Young?
I'm not giving a list of the ones I attended, except for the last one, which Dr. Beers and Mr. Kelly and I attended, because one of the things they had was a little film of what school was like in 1900. And they showed a Model T and then the crank phone, and then high school classes, the classes, the desks were all in a row. And then they went to 1950 and they showed the new updated automobile and they showed the new phone, which I'm sure kids today wouldn't even recognize as a phone. And then they showed the classroom as, the high school classroom as all the desks in a row. And then they went to 2018, and they showed the modern new cars and our cell phones, and guess what they showed? All the high school classes with the desk all in a row, so, which gave me a lot of thought, and, but one of the things that they talked about is what the, the classroom of the future should look like, and I came away pretty excited. I will share those notes. I'm sure Dr. Beers and Mr. Kelly will share that too, but one of the things they talked about is the need for, we're showing some of the new workplaces where instead of having the cubicles, but actually having tables where, where the work people, the employees could get together and talk. And I can remember working in an environment once where I was forbidden to talk, even though that would have probably helped a lot if we could have shared some of our ideas. But I, I, I think there's big changes coming and I'm really excited about it. I think, I love the meeting, the information we received tonight in CTE. I think our students are going to have amazing opportunities, and so I want to thank Ms. DiPaolo and Ms. Parker for that. But the other thing I just want to say is that April 11th to 13th, the Jamestown High School, the Jamestown Theater Group is going to present Newsies, and so that's something to look forward to, and if you've been to our other division productions, you know they're, they're outstanding, so please come and support our kids, so.
Thank you, Mrs. Young. Ms. Cook?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I just, also on April 11th, this Thursday, at 6:30 at the James City Recreation Center, the, James City County is hosting a neighborhood forum about the budget. And we sent our request to the county and the city, and recently both localities have released their budgets, and the administrators have reached their budget, released their budget recommendations to their boards, and what James City County's budget reveals is that there is potentially a $1 million shortfall from our requests to what they are recommending funding, and so that foreshadows potentially really difficult decisions for this board. So I would encourage everyone to attend that neighborhood forum again Thursday, the 11th, at 6:30 at the Rex Center, just to meet with your elected officials and chat with them and share your thoughts about, about the budget.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Ms. Young?
Go to that meeting, they can still go to the Newsies on Friday, and because those, the productions start at 7 o'clock, and so you wouldn't be able to do both that night, so.
Yeah, you drove really fast.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Dr. Beers?
Yeah, I also attended the National School Board Association Conference, and one of the things that, one of the sessions that I attended that gave me a renewed respect, but also certainly different perspective on school security. Mrs. Young and I sat through that, and, and what became clear is that there are schools that are actively practicing, learning how to deal with various aspects of some emergency that might come up in the, in the school. And, and the person making the presentation, he's a retired police officer and now he's an attorney, it, he said that, and I really believe that, is you have to practice this. It's not something you can do once a year, twice a year. And he did have students involved, and it was really very educational and, and demonstrated that students themselves can also be part of the process that goes against whatever kind of emergency might come up. I also had a, about a two-hour meeting with the vice president from Sedesco. Sedesco is one of the largest, I think the second-largest food service and management company in the United States, and who actually, they actually are, provide the, support the food service for the college, not under that name, it's another, another one of their companies. But what struck me after, you know, you know, talking with them, listening, is, and I know we had it, but we have a first-rate food service program, you know, we have dieticians, we have many of the things that smaller school systems don't necessarily have, and we're really fortunate to have the financial wherewithal to, to really have a top-level food service management. And I certainly have, I've tasted a number of their products over the last year or two, so I can attest that their culinary skills are right up there, very good. As Mrs. Young said, we attended the alternative ed program that was designed for a school that had about half our students, about 5,000 students in a town in Missouri, and one of the things that really did come up is that they had wholehearted community support for this kind of thing. They got the funding for a, for a building, small building, but one that could really function very much like a school. There were about, I, I think, didn't we figure about 100, 120 kids were, were in there from, and they were there primarily for, you know, trying to catch up, behavior problems, some of the, some of the things that we see in our own school system. But that's what really struck me is that not that many years ago, we had a situation where the city was going to give us land, and the county was actually going to come up with money to build a alternative ed program building, and I would love to see us return to the table to talk about that again. I found it really, there's, it's new, they're still in the process of evaluating the success of their students, but I, I thought it was really, that's really good. Kudos to our musical, music ed programs in here. As many of you know, I'm, I'm a very passionate supporter of the arts of, of all kinds, and the music productions and the, the music classes that kids take are, are absolutely, they're just outstanding, and you could certainly see it from the productions. I remember both of my kids starting out at Matthew Whaley with Ken Lassinger, and I think I can even remember some of the Speckle Frog lines, I don't remember, but what's really true is in those early ages, you know, they, my kids anyway, music was always around them after that. It just was just something that they always learned to appreciate. My, also hats off to Beth and, Beth Heishman and Valerie DiPaolo for helping us wade through the CET and the Perkins Grant. I know it's a, I don't want to say it's an onerous task every year, but it's, it's well worth doing, and the benefits certainly speak for themselves, and I know I probably left somebody out, but anyway, thanks to the rest of you who made presentations as well.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Mr. Kelly?
Thank you, Ms. Ombi. First of all, I'd like to thank my board members for letting me go electronic today. This, this trip, business trip came up while I was in Philadelphia last Monday, and so I didn't have the chance to get a move to get out of it, so I appreciate everybody letting me do this electronically. I'd also like to thank Mr. Archibald, I think it was, for his comments today. I agree with many of his comments about the teaching profession and the issues we have with retention of teachers, and I would hope that he sends, he would send us all of his comments and that we can, we can peruse that. Since the last board meeting, I went to Greece at Lafayette. I really enjoyed that presentation. I thought that was a well-done, well-done by Lafayette High School. And jumping off on what Mrs. Young said about Newsies, I'm looking forward to going to that on Saturday night. I think that'd be a lot of fun. Also jumping off of where Mrs. Cook talked about the budget and, you know, having the public maintain interest in, in our budget with our funding partners and making sure that they understand the needs that we have and really work towards fulfilling our needs, I think would, would be, would be very beneficial. Dr. Beers talked about emergency preparedness with schools. I think that's, that's pretty vital now as, as you know, as we're coming up on the 20th anniversary of Columbine, which feels like yesterday, but starts, starts to making me feel old, so it's just, it's amazing how quickly time flies by, and we, and we also, when we talked about food service, one of the things I think we should really mention is ship and the, and the service that ship does to our students and the education that they provide in, in nutrition and, and giving our, our kids a different experience. Dr. Beers also went today to, and I'm not sure who else on the board, and I know the, the invite went out to the supervisors and the city council for the Newport New Shipyard Technology Trailer that was up in, up at William &amp; Mary today. It's a, I would hope that sometime in the future that we can get our students a good opportunity to go through that trailer, really gives the, gives the students a good understanding of the technology that is available in shipbuilding and, and apprenticeships and the apprentice school and the things that are available that don't necessarily require a college degree. So I think that would be a great opportunity for our students to be exposed to. Where Mrs. Taylor is talking about with the National School Board Conference, I also attended and really, really enjoyed it. They went to several great sessions. They included crisis communication before, during, and after. Once again, what Dr. Beers was talking about, shaping the future of American public education, what's next for change makers, wellbilling, being a resiliency for educators in the classroom, which kind of goes to what our speaker was talking about today as far as educators staying engaged in, in our profession. Crossing the line when educators become predators, we talked about earlier. Apprenticeships, how, how can we convince parents that they lead to good jobs? It was an excellent session. Assessment for Learning Bright Spots from Virginia, which was a session from some of our folks in Northern Virginia. And the session I attended with Mrs. Young and Dr. Beers, the Un-Schooled Challenge, Re- Challenge Reimagining Alternative Education, and kind of a lot of good thought-provoking sessions there, and I really appreciated the opportunity to attend that, so that's all I got. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Ms. Hummel?
Hi, thanks. I also went to Greece, and that was great since it was a reunion of sorts for, for me, brought back lots of good memories since my daughter was Sandy back in 2012, I think, anyway. So that was really fun, bringing her to that as well. And we're going to be going on Thursday to Newsies, so the theater is alive and well in WJCC. I also went to the National School Board Association meeting, and just for the, the listening public, though, it is a, a absolutely incredible opportunity for school board members to go to any, there's just, I don't know, it's three days and you choose like two sessions in the morning, the keynote speaker, two sessions in the afternoon, and you've got about, I don't know, 50, 50 options within each morning. I ended up choosing the tracks that tended to be related to governance and executive leadership and law and legal kind of concerns, policymaking, those kind of things, whereas some of the, my other school board members would concentrate on CTE or special ed. So anyway, you have these different tracks. I went to sessions on what's happening in DC, so what kind of federal regulations are coming down the pike, supporting students through an equity-based support model, so seeing what other school systems are doing to support and promote equity among students, which is a particular, I think, area of interest for this board. Different ways that superintendents and board members can effectively impact equity in our district. The latest in school law, ways to run a school system to avoid lawsuits, so all of these things, just things to keep in mind so that you're not going to inadvertently do something you shouldn't do and get sued. We all want to avoid that. And then, oh, 10, I don't know why, I think I wanted to go to law school at some point, so some of these sessions, like 10 best practices to avoid liability, I don't know why, but these are the sessions that interest me that I go to. We had, I think all of us talked about it, Sir Ken Robinson was our keynote speaker, and he was really talking about how we need to transform our system of K through 12 education to really talk about how we can prepare our students for this new world of collaboration, critical thinking, and creative thought to replace the rows of desks that Ms. Young was referring to. So that's it. Other than to say wahoo-wa, I was at, in Minneapolis last night to watch the University of Virginia win the NCAA, and it was a wonderful experience, but I'm glad I was able to take the flight back and avoid the 14 inches of snow heading to- the flight back and avoid the 14 inches of snow heading to Minneapolis. So that's it. My report.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. So I will add, add to comments about the National School Board Association. I think what's great when most of us are able to attend is that there are so many tracks, and each of us tend to kind of gravitate towards our interest areas, but then, we then share those notes. I'm looking forward to sharing my notes regarding the sessions that I went to with my board colleagues, and I'm looking forward to your notes as well. And so, like Ms. Hummel and others said, I was able to go to multiple sessions, some on disrupting poverty, one on restraint and seclusion, one on preparing our students for mobile workforce, creating impactful business partnerships through community collaboration, preparing students for globally connected future. Was able to attend the NSBA Commission report on closing the skills gap, which was really interesting. And then, as Ms. Hummel mentioned, the general sessions talked about innovation in education and human resource management and preparing our students for the workforce. So again, I'm looking forward to getting more detailed notes from each of our school board members on the sessions they attended. I too attended Greece, and attended the original one when I didn't, didn't know Ms. Hummel then, and didn't know that her daughter was Sandy, and so looking forward to Newsies. And it seems like so long ago, but was able to attend Matthew Whaley's Read Across America a few weeks, I guess like two and a half weeks ago, I think Ms. Young was there as well. And I was in a favorite teacher's classroom, Ms. Kelly, and was able to read several books about diversity and, and embracing uniqueness among our, our peers and our classroom. And wanted to echo to listening public and our education advocates, now is the time that we ask for your support and advocate for the budget of need that we have presented. And then as a band parent, for a very long time now, seven, eight, nine years, I've forgotten how many years it's been, I know that we have a phenomenal music program. I know that with everything in me, but it's nice to have that recognition formally, and so accolades to our division for that. So moving on to upcoming events, tomorrow is a busy day. We have the School Liaison Committee, first thing tomorrow morning at 8:15 here in the Annex. Also tomorrow, in room 108 in the School Board Central Office, the 21st Century and Career Ready Advisory Committee is meeting, the Special Education Advisory Committee is meeting on April 11th at the REC Center at 6:30 in the evening. The Policy Committee is meeting on April 17th at 8 o'clock in the morning here in the Annex, room 300. The Teacher of the Year Award Ceremony will take place on April 24th in the Matoka Woods Room at the William &amp; Mary School of Education. Skip the events.
Madam Chair?
Yep.
If I could just, I noticed that the SEAC is, meeting is on the 11th at 6:30 at the REC Center, which, no, yeah, so that's at the same time as the James City County Neighborhood Forum, so I just thought I'd...
They'll be right next door to each other.
I just thought I'd point that out.
Yes, thank you for pointing that out.
Yeah, the CTE is May 8th. It's not, it's not tomorrow.
Well, thank you for pointing that out. Okay, clarification there. Thank you, Ms. Young. And then moving on to meetings, we have a closed session on April 23rd at 5:00 PM at Striker in room 123, following, followed by a regular meeting, N City Council Chambers at 6:30. A closed session on May 7th in room 309 here in the Annex, followed by work session in here, room 300 at 6:30.
So 5:00 PM on the 23rd?
It is at 5:00 PM.
Okay, it would be great if our calendars could get updated.
Yeah, I think, I think Ms. Sersa sent out an email, but maybe we need to double-check the calendar, but an email, I think, did go out about that change.
I don't know.
Maybe? It is 5:00 PM?
No.
Okay, well, maybe I just got the email. So we'll update the calendars. Unless there are further questions, comments? Ms. Young?
I forgot to do this. I need to do it.
Okay.
Great job that Ms. Taylor does. But today, when I was listening to the, the school bus replacement, I looked at this, we've got 22 buses with over 250,000 miles on.
My car, it's on my car.
Except, you don't, you don't have the wonderful mechanics that they have at operations, so I just wanted to give kudos to our mechanics, because they keep these buses running.
They do.
So, I forgot to say that.
They work some magic.
They do work magic.
Thank you, Ms. Young. With that, this meeting is adjourned.